Okay, so the meeting is resumed and we are now going to have a deep dive into the capital programme. And you've got to line up people, have you?
We do, yeah.
I'm sure we're all good swimmers.
So we've done a couple of updates here in the past on the capital programme. It's been more related to process, capital projects assurance division and systems and processes that we've introduced to sort of de-risk the programme. And now we're sort of in a position where we're keen to share how that's actually landing in the business and the intelligence that it kind of brings us in terms of reporting and risk mitigation. We want to start with just a bit of an update from James around some key insights, macroeconomics, et cetera. He's got all the answers on that. He knows where the economy is going next year, so we're really pleased to have him here to talk to that. He might give Paul a bit of a briefing afterwards as well. And then we'll go into the respective activity presentations where we have all our delivery groups represented. And we've given them six minutes each to be able to squeeze this in half an hour. But we'll start with you, James, if that's okay.
Well, thanks, Nick. So just to set some context around the programme this year, so the annual plan budget was 335 million. That includes a range of projects, particularly projects that aren't actually delivered by us either. So we have a lot of involvement with developers through vested assets or third-party delivered projects, which have quite a considerable part of the project that's actually delivered by Waukatahi as well. So yeah, it's quite a bit of a mix. In terms of where we're at this year and comparing it to last year, which is the orange bars, we're quite ahead of where we were last year. We're about 60% higher in terms of expenditure at the end of October. And November is looking like a pretty big month, 30-plus mil, which will be probably the biggest month we've had in the last few years. So everything's ramping up and you can see it out in the community, you can see the disruption, I guess, in terms of those projects being constructed. We're still tracking behind our kind of position where we thought we'd be. But the indicators are we probably will catch up to a certain extent, although it's probably a little bit optimistic. And the other thing to consider with that 335 is that includes what we call the capital delivery adjustment or the smoother, which is that $55 million negative project, which we use as a, it serves two purposes. One is as a kind of debt reduction tool. The other is it provides flexibility to the individual teams to manage their programmes without coming back to council continuously asking for additional budget. Just in terms of context as well, the four teams make up pretty close to 90% of the programme that we go through today. So it's a big whack. The other stuff that sits in that kind of grey box, there's a bit of marine stuff in there, there's digital programme and a bunch of other things on the edges. In terms of what's happening out there, it's no secret that inflation is an issue. This graph demonstrates that the inflation impacts all parts of the supply chain, it's not contained within specific parts. You can see there that the trend up until then, including a bit of COVID, was pretty static in terms of the cumulative inflation on those indices. And then you can see what's happened over the past kind of 12 months and also what's set to happen over the next 12 months. That tailing off is probably not going to tail off as much as we expect. I think the Reserve Bank's impact on trying to curb that inflation is probably going to be, it's going to take a lot longer for it to drop off. So that tailing off is probably going to increase a little bit more and it's certainly going to be an issue for the LTP as we develop our budgets going forward. There is a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel though. It's all anecdotal at the moment, but with a potential recession kind of coming up, there is talk that private investment will slow down and reduce, which will free some resource up. But in all that, there's still, there's still an issue that central government's still pumping money into projects. Been interesting to see how that LTP works out in terms of local government sector capex programmes. And all amongst it is just, there's still a resource gap, there's still an issue with capacity in terms of skilled labour. So immigration is a little bit of a problem with that. We saw a net movement out in terms of the country and up to September. So we're kind of keeping tabs on that. Yeah, it's something that we'll just kind of monitor over time. So that's kind of a bit of a snapshot, I kind of raced through that and I'll just pass on to Brendan to kind of talk about the transport sector. And if there's any questions you want to raise, but yeah.
Acted into that the fact that next year is a general election, we normally see government putting even more money out into the community?
Yeah, I guess it will be like, I think that that private investment lowering down is also a different type of investment generally. So most of our investment's horizontal infrastructure, a little bit of vertical. Most of the private sector is a lot of private investment that's mainly vertical stuff. So there's a bit of a skill that can be transferred, but generally that horizontal infrastructure is still under a lot of pressure.
You'll probably know more than anyone, and so election year, will the government, will government incoming, outgoing contract a little bit if we're reliant on certain funding or resourcing from central government? Does that play, Mary How with what we're trying to do? Are you anticipating lots of support from central government during an election year for some of these things we want to try and convert next year?
Normally you see lots of little bits dribbled out as we've started already. And then the incoming government tends to pull back in. Depending on who they are. Chad.
Thank you. Just again, the point you mentioned about vertical infrastructure. So thinking about the city and investment that the private sector are seeking to do over the next five to 10 years, do you see that as being impacted?
It's hard for me to say at this stage from a local point of view. I guess a lot of it is reliant on land opening up in terms of our growth as well. So yeah, I mean, we've got, I mean, we've seen the presentations in the city centre and there's a lot of investment coming in that space. We'd like to see that out potentially in Waikiki as well, in terms of town centre there. And I mean, Taureka at the moment, I mean, I've driven past on the way to Kaimei's and now you can see through Belk Road, all the growth out there. So I think locally, we're probably in a different position, probably to the rest of the country, I think, in terms of that growth.
Right, we'll just quickly run through transport. I think I can do this in six minutes, so we'll be pretty good. Next slide. Thanks, James. So we are tracking, depends which number you look at, I better explain. So if you look at percentage delivery, we are tracking to full budget. So my team are tracking based on assuming the delivery adjustment isn't in there. So we're tracking on both. But if you take advantage of the capital delivery adjustment, we are anticipating that we'll sit around 99% of our budget for the year to date. There is a few things in there that, you know, we don't control all of it, particularly around Taureka. So some of those big drops that you've seen, in particular around the business case and the construction is Taureka pulling back. So we've mirrored what Waukatahi are giving us. So that's why they're sitting slightly low. That balance of programme is particularly around vested assets. So that is one where we pay developers for delivery of infrastructure. So we've sort of been quite conservative with that because they never quite deliver as quickly as they anticipate. So we're anticipating spending 12.8 million, not 19.9. Happy to take any specific questions or I can just quickly move through to the next slide. So in particular, these projects are just our sort of top five. Cameron Road there is shown as red on cost. We're starting to see the impact of both COVID delay and cost escalation starting to come through the project. So we'll be putting a paper up as part of the annual plan deliberations, just in terms of an increase there. In terms of Taureka early works, Waukatahi are looking at a tender in March. So that's sort of March 2023. And in terms of Papamaa East, so we have a tender out at the moment for the local road components. That's the extension of Tiokaroa Drive, the intersection in Sands Boulevard. And then the actual bridge will go out in February, March next year. So there's a slight staggering of those two components. And the area B, walking and cycling is on track, but we're just sort of realigning those budgets slightly because it's got to go through the business case process. So there is a reduction, I think, of about 1 million in capital spend just to realign those programmes. Next slide.
Oh, sorry, Brendan, what's the, what's the orange scope on Papamaa East interchange?
I think that is just around, there's an extension of Tiokaroa Drive to Tumu, et cetera. So there's a little bit of ambiguity at the moment of exactly which components we're going to build as part of this project. Yep. Just in terms of risk, the three key risks that we've got is obviously, as you're aware, not all of our funding is guaranteed because we have the 51% from Waukatahi. So we got 98% funding through the NLTF, but that doesn't guarantee it, just means probable, possible, or I can't remember what the other description is. Number two is particularly around, transport is running still around 60% of our staffing. So we are still, we have a number of positions still vacant. We are going to market hopefully before Christmas and then the new year to try and fill some of those key positions. But it is a very constrained market. What we're also seeing is the consultant infill that we're using is getting more difficult because consultants are also getting very busy. So the availability of those specialist staff is declining as time goes on. And with our contractors, it's not uncommon now to only get a single tender. So our contractors are also very busy, very constrained locally. In terms of cost escalation, that is a big thing for us. Bitchman went up 48% over the last six months. And in general, we're seeing price escalation around that 20 to 30% per annum. We're hopeful it'll slow down, but it does start to impact as materials come through and tenders. I suspect we will see higher prices for some of the business cases and that may affect the viability of those projects. It's too early to tell at the moment, but that is a worry that we're just watching. Happy to take questions.
Papamaa East interchange, you described two separate projects. Was there not an opportunity to aggregate those into a larger project and get some synergy?
They are slightly different skill sets. So what we find is the local roads, so the Tiokaroa Drive extension, that needs to be done slightly earlier because we need to get in and mirror Blue Haven's development. But it's a different contractor will chase that as opposed to the main interchange. So that's why we separated the two out. We could have combined them, but you would probably end up paying for a margin on one contractor doing the other bit. Yeah.
Thanks, Brendan.
In terms of our programme, we're actually on track for the first four months of the year. There are a couple of variances up there. Stormwater one is reliant on the Tipapa development, so there's a bit of reflection on those numbers. And probably the renewables programme, there's an overspend predicted there, which is based on Tamanga. And it's around the renewables funding, we've got about 3.6 million there. So other than that, things are looking okay in the water space. And that's predicting in terms of the top five projects. The Wari project is one that's all good to go. We heard today that we can have potential blessing on Monday of the site, which is a real relief because we are ready to actually put water into the network. That project has gone well and we've come within the budget. So despite going through the COVID situation, so really pleased with that one. Tamanga, the bioreactor one, has caused a few headaches for us in terms of the piling. We're on to trial five at the moment. It's quite important, this piling, it's part of the resilience for that structure that goes on there, it's around liquid action. And the results will be known in the next two weeks as to whether this trial five has worked or not. So we're just keeping our options open. It'll have implications in terms of cost. We do have a Plan B, so, and it may have a little bit more of an impact on timing and cost, but there is a Plan B in place. Clarifier three is going reasonably well. There is a prediction that we will need to spend more money. So what we're looking at doing is actually bringing some money from the bioreactor into the clarifier and using some of the money that we saved on the landward outfall project, which went very well under the radar. You know, again, credit to the team for doing that. So relatively happy. And then the eastern corridor and the western corridor are all good. So, you know, comfortable in a happy space at the moment. However, risks and opportunities.
Just go back, just go back. So first of all, I did want to say to have YRE with three greens, I think is a huge, huge range of kudos to the team. That is a big, big project and to bring that in on time and on budget, by the looks of it, congratulations, that's really worthwhile. So well done.
The Tamanga bioreactor, the ground improvements tiles I've pointed out, is actually causing a few delays and has pushed the programme out. So it really depends a bit on how this trial goes as to what an edge direction will be. It could be an underspend for this year, given that we're going to lose some time. We'll probably have a better idea after Christmas on the better report back on that one. However, you know, the clarifier project is looking much better because we're looking to bring money forward to push that side of the project. Overall project mix, probably one of the biggest things, 40, 50% of our expenditure last year was on the Wari, the big projects. But what James and team have got in front of them now is a lot of smaller projects, which will keep busy in terms of the resourcing requirements for that. However, we've locked this whole issue around trying to find senior PMs and we've tried unsuccessfully for the last 18 months through that. So what we've done is we've gone for people coming into the organisation at a lower level and training them up. And so we've set our programme for the rest of this year based on that. So we still think things are achievable. And of course, the other thing on the windows which we'll roll in from next year will be the work we've been doing with ARAP in terms of having a panel for construction activities and planning ahead. So yeah, relatively in a good space for this four months. And any questions?
Afternoon. I'm going to have a bit of a talk to you now about the spaces and places projects. We're right with them at the moment. So in terms of our current spend, we're actually feeling reasonably confident where things are sitting at the moment. We've got a lot of things have gone into delivery, which is great. We've got tendered contracts in place. So if you don't look at the smoother, which makes like 130%, but we're roughly looking at about an 83% spend, the smoother kind of skews things a little bit. We've got one project that's probably running a little bit behind at the moment and I can talk to you about that in a little bit of detail and that's the offloading wharf, which we're just working through some consenting issues around some of the piling work at the moment. So in terms of our top five projects, we've got Manawa Falls, we have got the consent has been issued for that work at the moment. We're well into construction on that. We are running into a couple of headwinds around costs on that project at the moment. We've come to the part of the project which is undertaking the complex geotechnical stabilisation of cliff faces. So we're just working through some proposals from our contractor at the moment, just to understand what our options are around that at the moment. Marine Cray boardwalk, we got consent on Friday, which was pretty, big, big redheaded team was pretty happy. So we've got the consent. Work has started on putting the playground in this week and we'll be into the construction of that in January next year. The big day for the team was very happy on Friday. The upgrade to the sports field network, we're well into work of that. We've been past Lynx Ave lately, you would see that we're into constructing the sand carpet there and also doing upgrade work in Moreland Fox Reserve with more planned at Waipuna Park in the new year. The Marine precinct is the wharf project that I alluded to before. We're working through consenting at the moment and just going through a peer review process around some of the peers. But we should have that in hand. We're hoping to have that back in December so we can go into procurement in the new year. At Vessel Works, yeah, yeah. And then the Koperaheva Valley project, we're actually ahead of programme. So the team's well into the construction of the northern alignment down there at the moment. They're getting ready to do the bridge installation down there for the new cycle paths. So as long as we get good weather when we come back after Christmas, we should be doing well on that programme as well. Questions? We are working through that at the moment. It could be significant. At the site, what's, yeah. What's happened is there's been a lot of bad weather on site over winter. Some, it's degraded quite a few of the rock formations on site at the moment. So the, we're doing an assessment, doing an assessment of the site at the moment to see what additional work may be required to stabilize the rock base. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. They're looking at all those options at the moment. Yeah. Oh, I missed one slide, didn't I? Sorry, I missed one. So risks to programme, we've got a number of projects that have cross council project dependencies. So it's just working through the project managers to making sure that everyone's programmes heading along at the same pace. Inflation and cost escalation, you've heard that from the other three presenters today, we're facing the same issues around material escalations and also the availability of contractors and consultants locally to do the work. They're all pretty busy at the moment. So it's just getting in early and trying to get those services procured.
Cross council dependencies, is that, is that, how big, how big an issue is that?
It depends very much on the project, but probably a really good example is our skate park project that's going to be going ahead in Hell Road, for example, where that's very dependent on the Monganui Road project progressing because we can't put in that facility without upgrading to a signalised crossing there and making sure people can safely access it. So it's interdependencies like that, that we just need to make sure that both projects are progressing at the same pace.
Comments here? And certainly really pleased to see the number of greens in those top five. So good progress over the, over the year in space.
Next year. Thank you. Mike?
On the first slide, so you'll see we've got two major components to, to the programme. One is the civic development and the other is the waterfront and the public realm. The public realm, for example, also includes the upgrade of the Elizabeth and Spring Street car parks. We have a very high level of confidence in the forecast due to a number of these projects entering the delivery stage. And we've got two projects which we potentially are going to require a carried forward on, the one being the Beacon Wharf replacement. And we've just now finalised the options for that. And also the implementation of the Strand Playground. In terms of our cost, time and scope, pretty much in the green and the amber. And I'm happy to take any questions on those. I think the most pleasing one there is the seismic works on the Spring Street car park, which was completed on time and within the budget. So in terms of the risks and the opportunities, the highest risk for us for Tomanoataki Otupapa is securing of the external funding. And in particular, the library and community hub, which is the first project to commence. The second one is around supply chain issues on the waterfront and public realm, where we have uh where we're having to bring in um materials uh from overseas. Um, and we're addressing this by E C I involvement. And the third one is around um early contractor involvement. And the third one is around um ensuring the resilience uh of the project through appropriate uh governance. And I know there's a, a paper which will be presented um next Monday. Um, together with that paper as well, there, there will be a report presented uh to the council on the um, the preliminary designs and the cost estimates for uh Site A, uh Tamanu Wataki Otupapa. I'm happy to take any questions.
Just to explain, if you just go back to the, the, so just explain those costings to me.
Um, so you'll see that um the central library, the uh Site A um and the civic administration building, they all roll up into the table, the previous table, which is um the uh civic development programme. And the, the waterfront and the seismic works all um are included in the public realm and the waterfront.
Just that, that's the first year budget, is that what we're talking? Because it would be nice to think we're going to build a library and community hub for seven words, six million.
Oh, that's, that's the current, it's the current budget.
Yeah.
The current budget.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks Chair. Mike, in terms of the, the library and community hub and the time with the yellow, is that what's that primarily related to? Is that the, the timing in terms of the development of the plans or the removal of the um high voltage line across the site?
Yeah, it's around the high voltage line on site. Um, so we are um reliant on uh power code there, but we're certainly working in the background uh with them to ensure that those pre-works are completed in time for the start of construction.
Okay, so it's a pretty good um deep dive that we've had. Stephen?
In terms of a more generic question, the consistent theme in all of the sectors is around resourcing, supply capacity, et cetera. Is there any feedback from the industry about what more council could do to be top of their list in terms of supply capacity?
I think that the main feedback that we've heard and even at Building Nations last week is just the security of the pipeline. So the visibility of the pipeline going out a long way then provides him confidence of building up their resourcing, what jobs they're going to commit to. Like, that's really key. And, and I guess with us, we're always restricted from a funding round point of view for transport with Waka Katahi to actually lock in that pipeline. Um, and even across the civic and the spaces and places areas, it's the same funding constraint that doesn't let us uh put those things out with any certainty. So, yeah, the, the, the biggest feedback has been, it's been pipeline visibility.
Sorry, is that pipeline being addressed across all of the areas that we're talking about, including spaces and places? Or is it only more with the traditional works area?
Our, our original intent was to go broad across the organisation and then um we, we sort of, we foresaw that the problems with um getting Waka Katahi agreement to all of those uh more contemporary procurement methods and, and that that would take a bit longer uh to, to get to the point of having approval on that. So we, we are working on that. Um, but for now, what we are going to the market with this month in terms of a pipeline, uh, we've talked about the five hundred million dollars worth of work over six years. I think it is, that's in the water space. So this is, this is that, the strategic procurement that we kicked off um in July last year. Appointed A R A P in January and they've been working on that ever since. So um it's a start and then the intention is to expand that across the organisation to as great an extent as possible. But because of this awareness of, like James says, you know, they're, they're telling us loud and clear that that pipeline is critical. Um, and, and it will also be interesting to see what happens with the market now and the um uh, and, and, and availability um with some private developers, developers pulling back from, from projects and um uh not seeing the viability in some of what they had planned. So that might also mean that we get greater competition and more tenders in our tender boxes. So um we, we're looking at that really, really closely over the next couple of months.
You know, I mean, there's quite a few tenders going out over the next three to four months. So at the end of that period, we'll have a pretty good idea, at least in the short term, what, how the market's reacting and whether we're getting more tenders or less range in terms of the pricing coming through. So that's something we'll definitely keep an eye on.
There's just quite a bit of uncertainty around particularly Auckland Transport, but Auckland Council generally, they're going through their own budget constraints. Um, so even targeting some of those firms that are engaged in that market and providing them clarity of our pipeline might be an opportunity.
Yeah, many other players are the same. Um, we, we work with some tier three and, and that's what Brendan talked about before. Like uh for the intersection per se at P E I, where we have, you know, big structures. Um, that's the sort of tier, tier, tier one builders. Uh, but we work across the board. But in terms of the tier one ones, they're the same ones for us as they are in Auckland. So they've got a really good visibility of, of our programme.
Well, I think this is where we'll see the benefit of the Willis Bond Agreement too, with five or six years of construction guaranteed to, to, you know, a single party, they'll be able to build their workforce and all the subbies, subbies around, you know, that, that programme of work that sits in the civic precinct. So, you know, I think waters, we've made good progress and we'll be going out with those bundles, which will give that certainty. We said in the civic area, I think the I F F funding that we just received gives us the ability now to have a different type of conversation with, with our transport contractors. Um, and spaces and places, I think, as you can see, we're starting to build, you know, the team there that can then at some stage in the future start looking at bundles of work there as well.
Through the chair, Marty just sort of answered my question in parts, but I did allude to a question earlier in the day. That was it because contractors like certainty, they like pipeline, you know, lead in all those sort of buzzwords. Um, and that's what I was alluding to in terms of being in election year through agencies, whether things were going to start to get contract and things get a bit scratchy. So the certainty starts to get a bit fuzzy. So we can, you know, get out that, that pipeline. And, and so I, I anticipate next year, sitting here, hearing that, to be honest, until I hope to be proven wrong, but I think we've got some headwinds in that space too. Again, unless it's already locked in, you partly answered it Marty to what I allude to. But I suspect next year, there's going to be all manner of excuses as to why some of this might start to contract. And we can't give that certainty in that timeframe and pipeline.
Yeah, in saying that, I think, I think what you're seeing is the organisation's moving into a phase essentially where we are starting to move into contractual arrangements with many of our large contractors and large projects. Uh, and I think it's evidenced on the first slide that you put up. You can just see and feel that momentum building. Um, and, you know, if we can continue to perform the way we have for the first five months and just continue to build on that, uh, I think, I think we're starting to see, see things turn in the right direction. Certainly for the organisation, its capability and ability to be able to deliver large scale capital programmes, which in the next three or four years is going to be probably climbing up towards about um, you know, half a billion dollars.
So, so the other thing too is that we have a slight advantage in that we have stable, stable governance that hasn't changed from pre-election to post-election. And many councils around the country um have had a significant change in leadership and so will be, I mean Auckland's a, a typical case, but it's happening right across the country. So we haven't got that. So it's sort of business as usual. And boy, I was pleased to see that graph because if we could, if we could get anywhere near that by through next year, second half of next year, I think we'll be pumping with gas and there'll be no stopping this organisation.
Concur Chair. Like again, I, I've often considered councils should be sort of that eight hundred pound gorilla in the market with, with the, with the, you know, the synergy. And, and the, the economies of scale, um, you know, we should be a, a, a market leader in that space that we can sort of outgun most if we line up the ducks and do it properly. So, no, I agree.
Oh, um, any, any, Mike was last man standing, but any um, any more questions for the team? That was very good. That's very, very good. Thank you. That gives a really good picture. Um, and um, uh, interesting to see the common, the common risks right across the organisation of resources and people. Thank you. Um, thanks very much. So that brings us then to um, uh, community funding partnerships? Oh, yes, I beg your pardon. Um, we need a motion to receive this. Thank you, Shad and Bill. Any further discussion? All those in favour say aye. Against carried. Thank you. Uh, and that brings us to community funding. And we have eight issues to deal with. Um.
Um, I was just. Do you have a slide for each issue if that's helpful, just with the key points that the staff could have a, you know, very quick introduction to give them context and then, then you could then have your basic discussion around that if that helps the.
Yep, that would, yep. I was just wondering how long that was going to take, but go on, yeah. So first of all, I'd like to introduce Sandy Lee. I think you, some of you met her a few months ago. She's joined us from Fonganoi District Council and we've got Richard Butler.
Good afternoon. Um, yeah, so the community funding policy was adopted um by council last year um with a resolution that would review months to align with um annual plan, planning processes. Um, before that, there was a report that, for the first recommendation um to adopt the policy, um, that had noted that the policy was um intended to be an umbrella policy to, um, to cover other council funding streams for community, for community funding streams. Um, and that staff would do some work around what other funding streams would come under, under it. So basically, that's what we're doing as we did review, uh, looking at the, the scope of the policy um as reviewing it. Uh, there was a workshop that was run with um staff and managers of um the respective business units that administer some sort of fund um to look at what funding streams would come under it. And basically, it was a um decision was that would bring it on at the moment and as we progress, it might, uh, some might come, come out. Um, so yeah, I'll just quickly run through, um, give a summary of each of the issues and um you have to answer any questions. Uh, so one of the concerns that was raised by some of the stakeholders was around um funding, considering more amount of funding going to some sectors over others. So in particular, sport and recreation, getting a bit more funding than say the environment sector. Um, and it also bears out in some of the, in the numbers. So if you look at the uh, you know, the, the total amount of um investment, so about seventy-seven percent goes to the sport and recreation sector. Um, and you know, three percent goes to the environment. So that includes subsidies as well. So it includes um lease subsidies. Um, but when you look at just the cash funding, uh, while the portion's about uh same, there's a, well, there's a smaller amount that goes to um sport and recreation, it's fifty-eight percent. Um, it's still the largest sector. Social and arts culture, uh, similar nineteen and fifteen percent. Then the environment sector gets eight percent. So there is an opportunity here to try and um balance out some of the distribution of the funding across the different sectors. Answer any questions?
We're recommending that, your recommendation is that we provide a certain amount for each of those sectors.
So it's a portion, um, a certain amount based on.
Across, across the.
Yeah.
And, and the only query I have about that is, is then you might not get the equity of applications in one area. You know, you might have very low quality in one area, but you've said thirty percent is going to be to this, this range. And over here, you've got fifty percent of really high quality um.
Yeah, so um it could be a staged process. So it could be over a number of years that you eventually work up to a certain proportion. Um, also, when we look at the numbers at the moment, you know, a third of the um applications to the grant, to contestable community grant um, uh, you know, funded. And then another third are actually great applications, but they're just, there's not enough funding for them. So it isn't necessarily a, um, the lesser quality applications, we don't have um the amount of funding at the moment.
So, so, so let's say you, you, I mean, I don't understand why the environment only got um three percent, for instance. Was it because there wasn't a lot of applications or were the applications not, um, not significant, uh, et cetera? So let's say you apply twenty percent to the environment, but then, but then you've got um arts and culture might have twenty percent, but they actually get, you know, what, what could actually be forty percent of really good applications. But because you've put artificial um percentages in, you, you've got to turn down really good applications for some that might be, you know, average.
Just in reply to that question, there were very few applications in the last eighteen months for environmental groups.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, I am just talking to Stephen. I suspect three percent from an environmental point of view, the, the, the capital required for environmental projects is relatively small in comparison to sports and recreation or some of those other areas. Would that be a fair comment? I mean, if you're just planting trees as opposed to building facilities for sports and recreation?
It's, um, I guess there's just a complete range of projects in the environment, just as there is in any other sector. You know, um, from um high capex projects, like, you know, it'd be fair to say that there isn't a lot of, it doesn't appear that there's a lot of environmental groups who are particularly strong environmental sector in Taurang at the moment. But I guess the other part of the thing to consider is that if there was, um, if there was a sector that um the council chose to build, that could be a way of actually, you know, actually building that sector.
The, the area that intrigues me is, is this issue of kind of allocation of the fund at the macro level. But even if you look within a sector such as sport and recreation, there seems to be quite, at least from my cursory view, an imbalance between what various clubs or groups get. So the obvious example to me is the golf club that serves two hundred and fifty members or whatever it might be, who occupy an enormous piece of land, which they get rent free uh versus, I don't know, golf, um, cycle golf, whatever they call it, um, who just want a, a piece of, yeah. Disc golf, yeah, frisbee golf. Um, and how do, I mean, you could almost think that there might be some sort of formula based on the number of participants in our sporting code relative to the amount of money that is invested. I don't know, have you ever done an analysis like that? You know, rugby has X number of players as compared to golf, who has X number of, of um club members? And what's the relativity of that? Because there does seem to be a historic injustice. And if you're a new club coming through, how do you, how do you ever establish yourself? And, and kind of what's our process to enable those new developments to compete against the established clubs that are soaking up all of the money and land that we have already?
And you can see that across codes.
Yeah.
There's a related issue where some organisations actually own their own building versus the ones that are on council land. So um in the first grants round, we had, you know, we had two groups that are probably about two hundred metres away from each other. You know, one that's on a painter peppercorn rental, both had about the same number of members. The other group, you know, owned its own building, had to do all its own maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. So it's about how we start to build some equity on that.
That's my point really, is that I, I, I rather than divide it up by different um categories like sports and rec and social, et cetera, isn't there a better policy way to ensure that community groups get some sort of equity and take into account those sorts of, those sorts of things? And the fact that if you are planting trees, the capital investment isn't great. Um, because you're not talking club rooms, you might not be talking big area, you know, haven't got big areas of land. Uh, or you, or you might be working with a neighbourhood. So, so. Uh, or you, or you might be working with a neighbourhood. So, so rather than. You know, what I, my concern is we, we would end up, we, we could end up funding some. Um, quite mediocre projects simply because we've got this percentage of the funding available for that, for that particular focus.
Yeah, I guess it's also about, um, how you would actually be able to quantify some of the benefits, you know, environmental benefits. You couldn't quantify it as easily as you could, you know, sporting codes. X number of people that have memberships. So that's.
Thank you Chair, um, ju- just for my opinion is worth, I've seen this sort of thing develop. I, I'm actually a great fan of trying to capture in a snapshot. On a percentage basis or, or where, where the effort's been put in because we started off this in the, in the risk base for a long time. People say, let's just capture where, where the risks are. I see this as something similar. If you put that into something and it's just a reflection of appetite, real high level. Something there that comes to government, you have a look. Because I think if you put that into, you know, into a schedule form, I think most people would be scratching their head at those numbers. Exactly, in an environment going, it's such a time, you know, we're all talking save the planet, save the world, and that's all we're putting. It doesn't have to be detailed, but it, it, so it's an apportionment, um, uh, a guide, I suppose, one, a snapshot that you have a look. And out of it drops all those questions, you know, then you go, yeah, what's happening? Yeah, that's heavy on sport. Who's getting all this? Whether you want to pursue that is up to the committee and the management or however you do it. But to see it in a, just a, in a table snapshot, you keep, you're measuring it, you're seeing it and all those questions drop out of it naturally. And whether you want to pursue further details on it, because that intrigues me that to some degree, the sports, maybe not. Because we are, we've concentrated the city, bringing up the high prop, we talked about high performance. Some of that's, um, I think explainable. Other bits aren't. So I'd love to sort of trip, you know, it, it, it gets that conversation going. So. I've been a fan of a snapshot. Where is our, you know, uh, punch? What are we doing? So I'd like to see that more often in a table.
I can just, I think, and the team will correct me if I'm wrong, but the clarification is that's, that's based on the applications we've received. So it's not that we've got a, you know, we don't allocate only eight percent or three percent at the moment. That's the applications that we receive that are, you know, that meet the criteria.
Understand that. So if I, if I saw that with, with regards to applications, I would scratch my head and go, why is it limited? Why environmental? Why was there so few? Someone made the comment. Maybe, you know, if you ask these, it, it brings the questions up. And maybe it is time to go out there and reach out to those respective environmental agencies saying, hey, you know, what are you doing? How come there's no applications this year? Uh, you're very short on numbers. What, what, do we need to engage more? Do we need to educate you more? I don't know, but lots of good questions come out of measuring things. That's from my experience at least.
So I think you've got the gist of the conversation. Um, the, the last point there is enabling a more balanced distribution. But, um. But we certainly haven't got balance in there. Uh, and if the environment is the, the, one, one of the top values for the city, then, then they are good questions to be asking. But if, but I come back to my point, if we have a rigid percentage allocation, we end up. Not fun, we may end up not funding some really good things and funding a lot of average things and overall for the city, that's not good. Okay, so issue two. Oh, sorry.
Suppose for me, one of the questions is how the funding allocation or applications and funding allocations particularly. Can give life to our vision and being an inclusive city. Be focused on the environment and that type of thing. Because that then allows, things will change over time. So I'm, that's probably what I'm looking for. Yes, yeah.
Which is, um, issue that we discussed in issue five, I think it is, around purpose and priorities, community funding, is that we, do we tie it back into city vision and the priorities and action investment plans?
Issue two? Issue two.
About accountability.
Accountability reporting, yep. So, um, at the moment, the accountability and reporting requirements across the different funding streams in council vary, um, quite significantly. Um, and the current policy, the three grant funds, contestable grant funds. It's quite clear accountability, a reporting and monitoring requirement so that, um, you know, you get a surety that. The organisations are delivering on the objectives and also, um, that is meeting community need, the funding is meeting community need. Um, in other instances, it isn't always clear whether the, uh, amount of funding that's provided is actually proportional to what the community benefit is. Um, so for example, as it's mentioned before already, um, some of the, the lease subsidies, quite substantial lease subsidies, um, particularly some of them have been, or most of them have been, um. In place for, you know, more than twenty years, so there's cyclical agreements, then values have changed. So, um, there isn't necessarily a clear assessment of whether. The community benefit or the need at the moment is, is reflective of the value of that funding. So really there's an opportunity to, to, um, try and improve that accountability reporting and monitoring to ensure that there's, um. A bit more, you know, consistency in terms of the requirements across the different funding streams and to ensure that there's, um, you know, good proportional community benefits.
Comments on that? Makes sense?
I'm, I'm sort of thinking of a metric which might be something like subsidy per. Club member or participant or whatever. It'd be interesting to see what that might look like. You would, uh, it wouldn't be a huge exercise to do, at least a cursory look.
Be interesting to see. No problems with that though, accountability and reporting requirements, yep. Issue three.
Eligibility, yeah. Eligibility and multiple sources of community funding. So, um, at the moment, there isn't any explicit, explicit position on whether a organisation, um. Should be able to, um, receive multiple sources of funding from council. Um, and because of the lack of any explicit position, um, staff, staff just kind of take in discretionary decisions, make discretionary decisions. Um, which means that there's been different decisions made in different contexts. Um, so in some situations, funding applications have been approved. Organisations that receive, um, you know, as Richard said, lease subsidy and other types of, um, uh, subsidies, like rates of emissions. Um, but in other situations, when there's been, you know, highly, um, highly subscribed, um, testable grants. Uh, decisions have been made to only allow, um, the applicant or the organisation to receive one's form of, um, community grant. Um. Yeah, so there's opportunity really to, to make it a bit more explicit about what the council's approach will be to that. So there's transparency and consistency in decision making.
Well, your recommendation is that, um, you, you, that you take it into account. And, and give preference to those that are getting the least amount. I, I'm, I'm not sure that I would want to specify a limit. As to how much they can get because circumstances can be, um, different from time to time. But certainly the ability to take into account that the, the fact that they're already getting considerable. When you're weighing up between, between different applications makes perfect sense. Gives a bit of equity into it, doesn't it? Which means you've got to have done some sort of metrics on, on how much support they're getting. Any, any other comment on that? Issue four?
Right, so the community grant. Um, so at the moment in the current community funding policy, there are three, um, contestable community grants. So small match fund grants, less than a thousand, medium match funds, um, thousand one to ten thousand, and the larger community grants, ten thousand two, ten thousand one to fifty thousand. Um, and the intention was that the, this, these will provide a funding pathway for, um, projects from, you know, small seed projects, um. That loosely scoped out, uh, to get some initial seed funding through the, uh, match fund grants and then the. Could be, the successful ones could then develop into a larger project, um, and get support through the larger community grants. But looking at the, um, grant applications from the last financial year, uh, it hasn't actually functioned in the way that was intended. So, um, only two of the medium grant applications from the last financial year actually went on to then apply for a community grant. Um, at the moment, and a majority of the fifteen projects that were funded through the medium match fund grant, um. Also for ten thousand dollars, it's only a dollar less than what the, um, funding is for, uh, for the community grants. Um, both funds, both medium match fund grant and the community grant also require applicants to show that they've got some community support and investment in their projects. Um, so one is through the matching, um, through either, you know, in-kind support or, um, can also be cash or voluntary time. And the other through, is through providing evidence that they've been able to secure some funding from other external providers. Um, or, or also other financial contributions as well. So basically what that means is that the distinction between the match fund grant and the community grant are in some way quite ambiguous at the moment. Um, they both essentially fund new projects initiatives, um, and they both require some evidence of wider community investment into their projects. Um, now in terms of the small match fund grant, so the, um, intention was that they would basically fund small one-off projects. Uh, and, you know, fee that we've got, we got was that they're really highly valued, um. It's a source of funding for projects that, that fall outside of the funding rounds at the moment, um, the funding cycles. Um, but also, um, through some engagement, it was also highlighted that, um, groups that aren't able to find umbrella organisation can also apply to this grant as well. Um, so yeah, so the small match fund grant has kind of a wider value and purpose than initially intended. Um, so there's the opportunity to relook at the size and structure of those, um, community grants at the, at the moment to, to meet the, you know, current demand and need.
Think, um. Stephen's going to say, told you so. I think. Um, yeah, that makes perfect sense. Yep, all right, we agree. Um, issue five, partnership agreements.
Partnership groups, yep. So partnership agreements are basically a long-term funding, um, for select community organisations. Um, that have previously received some sort of community fund, community grant fund from council. Um, currently council has eight community, um, sorry, eight partnership agreements. Um, but the purpose of these partnership agreements is a little bit ambiguous at the moment, um, because of the various reasons. For why, um, different partnership agreement holders have received the partnership agreements. Um, so this includes, um. You know, some of them were organisations that TCC has, has supported, um, through funding, um, historically and to provide important service to the community. Uh, another reason has been that the, um, the organisations need to be delivering a programme or service initiative that's. Um, aligned with council's strategic priorities. Um, and another one has been the, uh, the fact that the, the key. They're considered key cornerstone organisations that help support organisations in the sector. Um, and because of these varying reasons, there was some concern raised by some staff that the, um, the term partnership doesn't necessarily always reflect. What that relationship is with those, um, community organisations, um, and that potentially can also create some, um, expectations around continued funding. Um, there's also some concern raised around, um, partnership agreements. Is it the only source of long-term funding at the moment through the community grants? Um, and that the, there could be improvements made to the process of, um, how they've been distributed to make it more fair. Um, and there are also other similar funding arrangements across council, um, to the partnership agreement. So there's an opportunity to also make them, make sure that there. There's a bit more consistency in that too, um, across them. Um, yeah, so we could look at what, clarifying what the purpose of partnership agreements, um, is.
Well, I think I could speak on behalf of the commission. We had a very clear idea of what partnership agreements would be. Um, and it's interesting to hear that's, that, um, that that is a bit ambiguous. Uh, and, and it wasn't just about funding, it was actually about working together. So the idea of partnership agreements with particular groups in the community like EnviroHub, like Social Link. Um, to name, to name a few. Um, was that we would, we would be working together and part of what we're trying to do is turn this organisation out to the community. Um, so if there is ambiguity, then I think we need to do a bit of work on this. I don't think we should be calling them. Multi-year funding agreements because they're not just about funding.
That's, so that's not the, that would be, no, yeah.
No.
More the community sector priority agreements would be more kind of your partnership.
Well, that's, that's local government speak. What the commission intended was that we identify some groups that we're working in partnership with. Some of which might be about funding, but some of it might be about working together on community issues. So maybe we need to do a bit more talking about this. Um, and make sure that we all understand what it is we're talking about because it isn't just about funding, that's for sure. It may well be that we contract them to do particular, um, jobs. But, um, let's have a, let's have a bit of a. Bit more conversation about that. It's clear that between staff and commissioners, there is a misunderstanding. Particularly, I don't know about the Mano Fenua members, but, um.
I was going to say, your committee members. I hear commissioner, commissioner and commissioner, but you, you, you've got the, the luxury of having your committee members who are Mano Fenua. In that space of what we believe partnership is, and it goes more to the heart of what you just said. It's not about funding, it's not about dollars and cents, it's about working together most of the time. So that's a good place to start, but we can certainly help in that space if you want some guidance as to what, uh, the wider context of what partnership is.
And I think Chair, a, a discussion around that's the principles of that, what are the objectives we're trying to achieve with that? Because I, I certainly thought it was reasonably clear when we were talking about that, um, previously. So, but I do concur. That I've actually been having that partnership arrangement, calling them partnerships. We might have other arrangements for multi-funding things. Um, and a partnership might end up as part of a multi-funded agreement or some other type of funding. But I think it's key to be very clear on what our, as a, 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 a committee, um, are seeking. In terms of that partnership role and it's in and out in terms of, um.
The way forward would be, um, in the new year, come back to us with the eight partnerships that we've got and who they're with and what they look like. And then where you've got concerns that's not equitable with our relationships with some others, make that very clear. So that we can have a good discussion about which ones are partners and which ones are multi, what are we calling them? Like, uh, contracts or where's your recommended? Community sector priority agreements. Actually, I hate that term, but whatever.
Yeah, I think, I think what we're seeing here is, um, uh. A, a policy approach to what actually needs to be operational partnerships. And I think what we need to see is certain parts of the organisation in an operational sense, step into the space. As opposed to leaving it in a funding policy. I agree, it's, it's much more than literally a transaction, it's a relationship.
Oh, yeah, I was just going to support that conversation because I think one of the things we were, we had been talking about was that, um. You know, the council can deliver stuff, but actually the community can deliver things as well. And so it's finding those opportunities where we can work together, partner, um, and then others delivering things. Alongside us or could be on behalf of us.
Thanks. Oh, so this, this relates back to the values?
Yes, that's right, yep, yep, um, yes, purpose and priorities of, um, community funding. So at the moment. Uh, the purpose of community funding, um, is quite broad. So we've got in the policy. Um, if I can find my notes, um, so the purpose is to, um, for, for community organisations to achieve council's strategic priorities, community outcomes, principal support. And there are six principal support in the, um, schedules. Um, and then applicants are required to demonstrate how they actually, um, how their project contributes to at least one of the community wellbeings. Um, so because of this broadness, it does enable a whole range of, uh, projects and, and organisations to be funded through this. Uh, but at the same time, it means that there's a, a, a high demand for this, uh, for the funding. Um, and in the last financial year, there was, um, only about a third of the applications were able to be funded through the community grant, um, and about half of the. Applications to the medium grant. Um, so some of the feedback we got from the stakeholders was around, um, having more specific purpose and priorities for, um, community funding, which will help to reduce the numbers and also, um, inform decision making.
So it carves out a place then for, for our, um, for the, for the, the local government. Because there's lots of other funding applications, but it actually sets ours out. Um, for our specific purposes. I think that's really good. I think that's really, really helpful. Any, any other comments on that? No? Issue seven?
Um, so during the pre-engagement, a point was raised that, um, you know, a couple of Maori groups work quite close. There are some out there that work quite close with Ewan Hapa groups and provide quite significant benefits to the community. Um, but aren't always, uh, some, don't always have a legal status. Um, at the moment, it means that, uh, because their policy states that, um, only organisations with legal status that are legal funding, it means that it could create some limitations. Um, so there's an opportunity to consider. So there's an opportunity to consider whether Kōpapa Maori groups that work close to Ewe and Hapa and provide benefits to the community could be eligible for grant funding.
We manage that against other groups who don't have a legal status. Wouldn't we be better to make it a broader policy with a bit of a, by building in the accountability? I mean, we've got the legal status, why? Why do we have a requirement that they have a legal status?
It's really a lack of the funding.
Yeah. So that, so that what, we're sure that they have adequate accountability within the system, is it?
Yeah, that there's the checks and balances around the funding. With non-Kōpapa Maori organisations, we require them to be a registered charity. And of course, that's a whole level of accountability around that. So it's just, it's public money, it's just having some level of checks and balances. I mean, what we're recommending is the status quo, but making sure that there's umbrella organisations. I mean, you mentioned social and kia, they've acted as an umbrella for two or three organisations and that's worked really well.
Yeah. Yeah, you would be better to do it that way. I'm just, I'm just worried about singling it out just for Kōpapa Maori because you might find you've got Pacifica groups, you've got, you know, a whole range of other groups who don't, who also work in a similar way.
Yes, this was just fed back to us through the consultation, the engagement, the staff.
And I think it works really well, like particularly if we have those partnership agreements. And those, one of the, one of those partner organisations, like EnviroHub as well, has acted as a legal umbrella. So it's almost becomes part of, part of what they offer for us.
Yeah, that's right. Yep. I'll hurry you.
Kia ora, just on that, because I know at like paragraph 53, it says that this was raised and, you know, including Maori also have that issue. And yet the recommended option is saying for Maori groups without legal status to work with Maori. So I'm just, and I think it's because sometimes there are trust. But sometimes Kōpapa Maori groups aren't associated with Maori, so that may be limiting. And it is difficult for, you know, again, that's just another barrier for some Maori groups to access community funding. And I take Anne's point as well. In a previous life, I worked on the Environmental Legal Assistance Fund at the Ministry for the Environment. And you might want to have a look at that where they provide for groups who do not have a legal entity. And so there's like, there are some ways to mitigate those accountability concerns. And that is a ministry kind of level organisation that uses public funds, which might be able to, you know, give you some consideration in terms of looking at ways to make that open, but also address the concern that was raised at that Rangapu hui, so kia ora.
Bit more work on that, bit more work around that as to how, how we, yeah. And it's good to have a look, see what the public sector does, yeah. All right, anything else? Issue eight?
Last one is just around the community funding boundaries. So at the moment, the policy states that really for community funding is for projects, initiatives that are located within TCC boundaries. But there are a number of sites that we know of that are TCC owned or jointly owned and managed that are outside the city boundaries, that are recognised as providing benefits to the Taonga community. There's also noted in our discussions with the Rangapu reps that Ewe and Hapa boundaries also don't align with TCC boundaries, though they're considered part of the Taonga community. So there's kind of a need for acknowledgement of these sites and consistency in council's approach to funding these community organisations that are sitting in TCC-owned land.
Yeah, I think if you're guarded by the values and providing benefit to the Taonga community, I mean, we accept, we have to accept that there will be some organisations who go across boundaries, whether they're. Other clubs? Excellent, nothing more? But enough to go on? Would someone like to move then that we received that report? Thank you, Bill and Wayne, thank you. Any further discussion? So that will come back to us, you'll come back to us next year? Yep. Jeremy's down the back taking copious notes, I'm sure. Thank you very much, all those in favour say aye against carried. And that means we get to the end of the meeting. Would someone like to, oh, no, so we don't have to go. Would you like to close or should we ask a peer? Do you would like to close with a karakia for us? Closing the meeting.